Good evening. And welcome. We'd like to call to order. The joint public hearing. On the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Operating in capital budget for today, Monday, September 23rd, beginning at 6 o'clock PM. Before we proceed with the agenda. We'd like to call the role of the participants by charter. Mayor Harry Dublin Rilling.
Yeah.
Chief Financial Officer Jared Smith.
Yeah.
Superintendent Alexandra Estrella.
Here.
Board of Education Chief Financial Officer Lunda Asmani.
Yeah.
Common Council President Darlene Young.
Here.
Board of Education Chairperson Diana Carpio.
Here.
Board of Investment Taxation Chairperson Ed Abrams. Planning and Zoning Commission Chairperson Lou Shulman.
Here.
Board of Education Finance Committee Chairperson Sherry McCready Pritchett.
Here.
And myself, Greg Burnett, Chairperson for the Finance and Claims Committee of the Common Council. We also have several members of the Common Council and Board of Education. Elected officials also in the audience for today's public hearing. The public hearing will be conducted in person and virtual via the Zoom platform. Translation is available via Zoom by selecting the closed caption button and selecting the desired language. Additional information and instructions are available on the website where the meeting agenda is posted. We ask that residents that are present in the common council chambers. Please sign the speaker list, which is at the podium. When we move to that section of the public hearing. Before we move to item three on the agenda, which is the presentation from the finance departments. We'll have opening comments from Mayor Harry Rilling and Superintendent Dr. Alexander Strick.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett, and welcome, everybody. I think this is a really great way to start working on the budget for the coming fiscal year. I applaud the Charter Revision Commission and the council for for putting this forward. It gives everybody an opportunity to be involved in the process before it even starts. So we need to hear from the public thoughts on the budget. Things that perhaps you feel are necessary, things that you'd like to see, whether it be operating budget or capital budget. You know, and and again, it gives us an opportunity to hear directly from the members of the public. Again, prior to starting the budget process, which the budget packages will go out very shortly to the department heads. And then there's a whole timeline that you can look on the city website to find out exactly when things are taking place. So again, we welcome your comments. We'd like to hear exactly what your thoughts are. Because you're the people, you're the taxpayers that we're budgeting your money and we want to make sure we do it right. So thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this town hall with great excitement that. Joined here with my colleagues to start the conversations around the budget. Like last year, we're looking forward to a very fruitful dialogue, not only with the community, but those members of the council and the BET. So that we can have a budget that will effectively support the needs of our scholars across our system. We're looking forward to this town hall and many other conversations that will allow us to understand. The needs of the community and also to allow the the community to know. Some of the needs that we have across the school system to most effectively support our scholars. Our CFO will speak in greater detail in terms of our thinking, areas of focus. That we're seeking to further expand upon this fiscal year. And as we plan forward for the next fiscal year as well.
Great. Thank you to both of you for your opening comments. We will now move to item three, which is we'll have brief presentations from the finance departments. Beginning with the Chief Financial Officer Jared Smith. Followed by the Board of Education Chief Financial Officer Lunda Asmani.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. You all have the have the presentation and it's on the screen now for every everyone to see. This is just going to be a high level looking at what happened in FY24. How we ended FY24 as in what we know right now and then. You you'll have the calendar for the upcoming budget development. And also take a look at what's going to happen, what we anticipate is some of the calendars for FY26. And we'll look at some of those individual factors. Go to the first slide. This is a summary of where we ended FY24. And I'll call your attention to a few things in particular. In the middle column, you see we ended the year, we're projecting the end of the year with a $2 million surplus, just over $2 million. And a couple of caveats to that. One is that, and these are, these are very good things and you know, bodes well for the city. We did not, there was a budgeted $6 million drawdown of their Ring Day Fund fund balance. We are not going to have to do that. And still, we're ending up with a $2 million surplus for the year. This also takes into account a little over $4 million in carry forwards, go forwards that we did from FY23. Go to the next slide. About three weeks ago, we went out to went out to market for bonding. We had $20 million in bonding that we were doing and $15 million in bands. We were able to achieve the AAA rating, which is great. And you know, it bodes well for for the city and and everything that's been done over the past years and and also recently in the capital plan. And the amount of bonding that we put in there to stay under the thresholds that that the city has set for itself. Again, no drawdown on the Ready Day Fund. We have. In the in the revenues. We had, again, $2.2 million surplus for FY24. And then I would want to point out that the tax revenues. A lot of that was due to. We had, there was a little bit of fall off in revenues related to settlements. From past appeals, property tax appeals from the 2018. These things take years to play out and some of those played out over the last four of the past year. To the point of $3.4 million. Fortunately. We also underwent a tax sale. And some of the tax sale, both of the tax sale. Also came to fruition on throughout FY24. And so that helped to offset the. Those loss related to the settlements of tax appeals.
Excuse me, James, is there any way that you can share these slides online? Those that are watching online are not they're not seeing the slides. We all said. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I want to go back to the bond rating real quick because there are a couple of things worth noting there. We, so we went into the bond sale and we had seen what was going on in different. Different comparable sales throughout the region, Connecticut, New York State, Long Island. And we had anticipated getting rate somewhere around 3.5% to 3.7%. We actually ended up getting a rate of 3.37%. So we did a lot better than anticipated. On the general obligation bonds and got a rate of about 2.89% on the on the short term. So. Kudos to everybody who was involved in in that process. On the expenditure side. We, the departments did a great job of controlling their budgets, knowing the some of the challenges that we were facing. And we were able to see positive variance in a number of different departments. Into that fees, the total variance on the spending side was about $8 million. Investment income was also a positive in the budget. That was off about $6 million to what was budgeted at the time. So that's a that's a summary of the, you know, some of the highlights from FY24. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on the calendar. We have have it all laid out in the background that you were given and that's presented online. So if everyone can take a look at that, we are, this, this was one of the changes to the charter, this particular public hearing now. So this is one of the changes in the in the charter that we're that we're doing now as far as. The other dates within the calendar, they're following what's it within the charter at this time. If we could skip ahead to. FY26. So a couple of the things that we're looking at for FY26, we have a exhaustion of the ARPA money. So to the extent that that has been used in past years. Related to the operating budget, that money is is going to be phased out and will no longer be available to the city. We'll continue to spend it on the capital side in particular. But as far as using the using ARPA funds on the operating side. That will no longer be available to us, at least through. The end of 2026. We have ongoing inflation concerns, but nothing, there's nothing that we're seeing that's that's really going to be out of the ordinary. So we're, we are looking at, you know, obviously taking into account inflation and how we budget for FY26. There, but there's not a anything in particular that we're seeing right now that we think is going to be a major concern to the budget. On the other hand, we have a couple of items, the next two items on the list, which is the phase in. Of the property tax, we've got property asset revaluation that was done last year. And also some changes that the legislature made to the motor vehicle tax. Assessment. So this next year, we'll be taking into account second year of the reval. And just to remind everybody, because we saw such a big shift. In property tax assessments. Shift from commercial to residential in particular. We decided that it would make sense to do the the phase in, the phase in is over four years. So this this year that we're in right now, first year, and we'll be. Developing a budget that includes the phase in of the second year. So it's a 25% a year is the amount. With regard to motor vehicle, this will not kick in and doesn't affect this year's budget or this year's tax bills. But there will be some changes in motor vehicle taxation that were. Not changes that the city implemented, but they were done by the state legislature. And what the the biggest piece of the. The biggest piece does is it says that the cities have to take their motor vehicle rate. And it has to be at least as low as whatever their lowest municipal state tax rate is. So for Norwalk, that means going from a 32.46 mil rate down to. We'll see how things pan out with when the when the budget ultimately gets developed and drafted. But it will be down somewhere in the low twenties. So there's going to be about a third. Difference in terms of the revenue that's collected from motor vehicles in the FY26 year. And that's going to be just because the. Norwalk, like every other community, doesn't have a lot of ways to. To shift that burden, it will be shifted to residential. Residential property taxpayers. And so that's, that's something that we have in mind and something that we're going to. You know, try to account for. One thing in particular is to take a look at our fund balance, make sure that our fund balance is high. As I mentioned, we we didn't have to do the drawdown of $6 million last year. We're hoping to minimize the impact on fund balance this year. We do have. We have budgeted for $8 million, but we're hoping that. By the end of the year, by controlling the budget, that we'll be able to. Minimize the impact on the fund balance. And the fund balance will be and can be a tool that we use to help offset. Any of the tax increases on the residential side. There's all, and the motor, the other big piece of the motor vehicle change was that it's kind of a methodology. To assessing motor vehicles is going to change where. Where all towns are going to be required to just take the MSRP of a car. So for example, in 2020, you bought a car in 2024. Take the MSRP and take 90% of that. And that's going to be the basis for evaluating your your car. And then every year after that, it'll be reduced by 5%. And so it's going to be fairly standard.
Did you mention that we're looking for a company that's going to try to find people who don't register cars? So a lot of people are concerned about that.
Yeah. And yeah, the mayor just pointed out, reminded me that we are. We have, we found the company and and are right now working on finalizing the contract with the company to. Take a look around the city, go throughout the city and find out of state. Licenses and make sure that everybody's paying at their residence within the city of Norwalk. So we're, you know, looking forward to that as being something that could potentially offset the public changes in motor vehicle that the state needs as well. We have another big piece that could be a factor in FY26 is the negotiation of labor agreements. All of the, all of the city's labor contracts expired at the end of last fiscal year. So at the end of June 30th, 2024. And those are being negotiated now. Fortunately, we had the foresight and and did set aside money contingency for those. For those potential increases. And as of right now, we are, we're hopeful that what was put into contingency will be sufficient to. To cover all those costs, but that there's, there could always be some. Some changes there depending on how those how those contracts play out. In 2026, as I mentioned earlier, for 2024, investment income was higher. But we we kind of reached the peak in 2024. And so we're going to start to see and. Have already seen signs of it based on some action taken by the Federal Reserve in their most recent meeting where they. Cut half a point. And the thinking is that that trend will continue into the future. And so that's going to limit the amount of that investment income that the city sees as well. So. Kind of ramped up, hit our peak in 24 and expect that it's going to start tapering down. Also, on the plus side, we have the our OPEB, which is essentially a retirement health care plan. Which is funded in the same way that our pension is funded. The OPEB plan is fully funded, is actually overfunded, which is a good thing for a budget going forward because we. We have, we only have to pay the normal cost of budgeting for the current employees who may retire under the OPEB. And we no longer have to be concerned about the any unfunded liability that's often others to date. So we 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 will need to take a look at that and also, you know, look at the returns that come in from the money that we have invested in in the OPEB fund. As long as, as long as things stay stable. That won't, that won't be a huge ball piece on budget going forward. That's the end of my presentation. Thank you.
We now have the presentation from the Chief Financial Officer for Board of Education, Mr. Lunda Asmani.
Before Mr. Asmani presents, I think the Finance Chair should has a few words that you'd like to share, if that's okay.
Sure, I was going to our own panelists to have share comments during the discussion part, so we can get to the public hearing. After the financial presentations, but she.
But I think she has an open opening to to.
Okay, sure, no problem.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherry McCready Pritchett. I'm the Chair of the Board of Education Finance Committee. And with me tonight, I have Chair of the Board Diane Carpio. And I believe online I have Board Secretary Kara Nelson-Bakey. And I also have some board members in the audience. I believe Ashley is here and also Janine Randall. As was noted earlier, the purpose of this hearing is to hear from the public so that you can lend your voices. To the budget conversation as we begin the budget development process. Hearing from the public will give us a better understanding of what the priorities are and how we can best support the community. Currently, relative to special education costs, the district is running on a deficit. As the Finance Chair, I see the amount of transfers that are transacted in order to fund specialized learning costs. As a result, we may have to go back to the city for a special appropriation, but of course, we will continue to monitor that. At the same time, last year, the Board of Education and the city were able to work together collectively. And to collaborate in a very positive manner. While the district did not receive all of the requested funding, we managed to collaborate and partner in a very productive way. Having witnessed numerous budget cycles. My sense is based on last year, the process seems to have come a long way. From prior years where things were not done as collectively as they were this past year. To that end, we're hoping to continue this work with the city in a collaborative and positive manner. As we develop the FY26 budget. Thank you for your time, for being here.
James, if you could queue up line, please. Thank you. Please proceed to the next slide. So similarly, I wanted to kind of provide a brief overview as Ms. Sherry had mentioned. We finished a year, the budget that was approved last year was just over 226 million. We closed the year unaudited yet at about 226 million. Sherry cited the collaboration that existed last year between the board. And the city and through the leadership of the mayor, working with the superintendent. The city was also able to provide to the Board of Education an additional $2.5 million from the ARPA funds. So in addition to what you see here, in terms of the general fund spending, we were also fortunate. To receive $2.5 million in ARPA funds through through the city. And so that is in addition to what is spent here. The board also does receive numerous grants, statutory grants that we get from the state. And those also fund our education expenses. The general fund roughly covers 85% of the total of education cost. The balance of the 15% is through a combination of other resources, state grants and any supplemental funding through through the city. So we appreciate the opportunity on who have done that. The next slide kind of just provides an update on the budget cycle. It's very similar to the. To what you heard from from CFO Jared. In that we have a cyclical process. Right now, we're at the beginning phase. We develop a form of budgets that we send out to our departments. They start putting in their requests based on trends. We include things like contractual obligations, as I mentioned. The Board of Ed budget is about 85% health and benefits. Health insurance and salaries, and therefore that is a big driver of of the budget. We don't have any contracts. That are up, well, we do have one, we just settled our administrator, we haven't settled. We're working towards settling our administrator's contract, but we did settle our teacher's contract and all the other contracts that we have. With our collective bargaining units are in force, are in place. So we kind of have an estimate, a good estimate of what our our needs are. For that following year. So our budget cycle is cyclical. Again, we're thankful that this process is now in the charter for us to have these conversations. Looks like this. So in terms of key achievements here at the at Norwalk Public Schools. Last year, we actually saw growth in our graduation rates. You know, our goal is. We would like to get to 100% graduation, as the superintendent has mentioned. Every time she's at the graduation ceremonies, she's always thinking of who else could be walking past this stage. That hasn't been able to with their with their classmates. So having said that, our graduation rates district wide grew from 91.1%. To 91.6%, and we're working tirelessly to continue to to allow that to grow. Our highest growth has actually been in our multilingual learners. They have shown the greatest improvement. In growth. So that is something that we celebrate here at Norwalk Public Schools. We also have a program called our Future Ready Programs, which includes Twilight and our Virtual Academy. This program allows students who are not able to complete their education through the traditional means. Family circumstances don't allow them to continue education in the classrooms. So we have this program that has continued to grow. Currently, we serve about 100 students. And they continue to graduate as well in this program, but it just offers an additional opportunity. For our students to graduate despite the circumstances that they may, that they may go, that they're going through. Most of these assignments are project based, positively impacting our graduation rates as well. And so these are intentional initiatives. And then for the fifth consecutive year, we're excited of this honor of the National Association of Music and Merchants. Foundation has recognized Norwalk Public Schools as one of the best communities for music education. This award honors districts with a strong commitment to music education. And you recall that. In our capital budget request for two years now, we have received funding for instruments for our students. And so this is why. These things are educational. It is a holistic approach to education. Excited, please. The other achievements that we also celebrate are each year, the state provides what is called the District Performance Index for Connecticut. And what we've, what we know in the state of Connecticut is that all of our districts are not the same. And therefore, what this looks at, we look at districts that are urban like ours. They have similar demographics, similar needs. Similar challenges, similar opportunities. And so in looking at the city districts that we belong to for. When you look at English Language Arts. For 2024, Norwalk Public Schools actually was first. In the city school districts in terms of English Language Arts performance based on the District Performance Index. When it comes to math, again, Norwalk did rank first in 2024 compared to city districts within the state. And likewise in science. Now, having said that, there is a state average and you'll see that we still have ways to go. So whereas we are celebrating that we are doing well in this regard, but there is still work that needs to be done. But I think the trajectory of where we're going as a district is one that we would like to to celebrate with you. The next set of information that you have on the next slide. Is a similar story. This one looks at, James, yes. So this one looks at English, English, English Language Arts. And this looks at students in grade four through eight. And this is basically the percentage of the targets that's achieved by these students. And so you begin. the percentage of the targets that's achieved by these students. And so you begin the year with a target that you want your students to achieve. And so you're measured on your attainment of the target. And so again, if you compare for English Language Arts and for math, uh Norwok Public Schools amongst city schools in the state, again, uh ranks the first. Uh again, the same trends, uh we are still not where we want to be as far as the state average. Uh but it is a trajectory that we want to continue to grow so that we are able to achieve those um those attainments. And so we thank our administrators and teachers and everyone that's directly responsible uh for allowing us to achieve these um these attainments. Uh the other successes we do want to celebrate again, this is in collaboration with the city um and the state. Uh next slide please. Um we were able to receive last year thirty from the state, twenty one and a half million dollars to modernize our air conditioning equipments in the schools. That twenty one and a half million dollars from the state was complemented with a fourteen point four million dollars investment from the city. So together between the state and the city, there's a combined thirty five point nine million dollars invested in our HVAC systems. Uh what we do know that children learn best in clean and comfortable classrooms, and our teachers teach best in clean and comfortable classrooms. And therefore, this again is a continuation of the investments in our systems. Uh Sherry talked about collaboration with the city. This would not have been possible without that collaboration and with the great work of our legislative uh delegation that really works well with us. Uh the other thing that we want to celebrate on the next slide, again, sticking with the capital budget theme is uh we were able to break ground on two amazing facilities in this district after a very long time. The Norwok High and P-Tech Campus, these are pictures from about four weeks ago. Uh two hundred and thirty nine million total investment for the Norwok High and P-Tech Campus. Of that two thirty nine million, a hundred and ninety one million is from the state. Uh through the efforts of the city and our legisla- uh legislatures, uh we were able to get twenty eighty percent uh reimbursement for this project, and the city is only investing, not only this, but quite a bit of money, the city is investing twenty percent. And likewise, uh we are now building a school that hasn't been built in South Norwalk in almost fifty years for a total investment of seventy six million, of which thirty nine million comes from the state um and the balance is through um the city's investment um in our infrastructure here at the school. So I just kind of wanted to share those by way of successes and achievements uh for the past year. There are many, and we will be providing a a more comprehensive list as we go through this budget process. But finally, I do want to look look ahead to uh to the next fiscal year and some of the things that the district is looking to do. So obviously, next slide please, James. As I mentioned, through the collaboration with the city, uh last year, this year that just ended in June, uh the city was able to provide supplemental funding to the Board of Ed, to the tune of two and a half billion dollars through federal grants from the state. This year again, we received some additional federal dollars that the city appropriated uh to the Board of Ed for one point eight million. As my colleague Jared had mentioned, uh these funds are going away. Uh they're not there anymore. So one of the things that we will be looking at in developing this budget is how do we continue to maintain the excellence and the service levels um in an environment where some of that funding has has gone away. So those will be some of the challenges we're looking to address this fiscal year. Chairman Pritchett mentioned about special education. Uh the costs continue to increase, not so much uh, well, both. The number of individuals that are identified as needing special needs has grown, but also the unit cost for uh our special needs students that have to go out of district. And so working with our partners, uh we do have a number of supports that are provided in district, but this is something that we are collectively looking at and will be something that needs to be addressed as we go through this budget. Uh this year again, uh the state was um through uh reallocation of funds, did provide the district with an additional one point two million dollars in alliance grants. And our hope is that this this continues. Uh we've been in contact with the state. They have informed us that this will stay. I think there is a conversation about how it flows into communities. Some of these funds flow to the city, some of these funds throw directly to Boards of Education, and depending on how uh these funds flow this year, that will be a conversation we'll be having uh just to maintain those services. Someone is listening. Uh the last two bullets is really just looking at how do we provide opportunities? And we had this conversation this morning is we know that not every student is college bound. Um college is not for everyone, and there are some that can continue to lead meaningful lives, follow their passions in paths that don't necessarily take them to college. And so one of the things that we have been looking at are different pathways and how we can partner for certification. Uh we have partnerships with a number of partners locally, EMT certificates uh with our local colleges and so forth, just providing opportunities. Uh this year, we actually looked at providing partnership for HVAC certification. Unfortunately, uh we weren't able to 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 complete that because of because of funding. But these are just some of the issues that we will be dealing with um in developing the budget, and we'll be having further uh conversations with the city and the public. Um and with that, I conclude my remarks.
Great. Thank you, Jared and Loomis, for those presentations as as a backdrop in terms of some of the items that challenges that we will see going into the fiscal year twenty twenty six operating capital budgets. But the objective for tonight is to have the public hearing, to hear from the public what your thoughts are as an input as it relates to uh the upcoming fiscal year budgets. Uh the actual budget requests are beginning to be formulated now within the city departments, schools, and grant agencies. Uh as they begin to file those reports with the respective finance departments in the months of October and November and for discussions and reviews in December. Uh we plan to have additional joint meetings of the finance committees. Uh the next one will be scheduled in January of twenty twenty five along with public hearings throughout the public uh the budget process uh in the early part of January, excuse me, early part of twenty twenty five. So at this time, we'd like to begin the public hearing uh section of the agenda. Uh those residents that have submitted email communications, and we've refused, received a few, uh those emails will be entered into the minutes of tonight's meeting. For members of the public that are here in person, please sign into the speaker sheet that is located at the podium uh so that we can ensure that you have an opportunity to share your thoughts. Uh if any member of the public is wishes to speak online via the Zoom platform, uh please raise your hand uh uh using your electronic indicator. And the host, James, will uh admit you into the meeting so that you can share your thoughts. Uh each person will be given three minutes to share your comments. Please uh state your name and your address for the record. And um at this time, we will begin the uh public um hearing. And um Tom, if you can read who members that are here present that wish to speak.
Sure, I'll uh I'll read two names each time the person who's due to come up and then who is uh the next one that's uh on deck, so to speak. So first off is Daisy Sebastian, and the individual after her will be Sachne Park. And forgive me on the pronunciation.
Hold the microphone down so it's easier to hear.
Hi, good evening. Uh my name is Daisy Sebastian. I live at one two seven Perry Avenue. I have four children in this district, one at Norwok High School, one at Westrocks in the Dual Language Program, and two at Silvermine Dual Language Magnet School. I'm here tonight to ask for your help. The Dual Language Programs at Silvermine, Dual Language Magnet School, and Westrocks Middle School is in need of all of you to take action. If you are not aware of this incredible program, our teachers, grades K through eight, educate and elevate our students in a fully immersed fifty fifty English-Spanish dual language learning environment with the goal of graduating bilingual and biliterate leaders of the world. As many of you know firsthand, bilingualism and biliteracy is what we like to call Silvermine, their superpower. Well, I'm sure you all greatly value our incredible programs since I see NPS social media posts highlighting and celebrating successes in our dual language programs. Most recently, our incredible student who was featured on the cover of Scholastic News. But our program is in trouble. We are struggling to fill our classrooms with certified staff to teach our bilingual and biliterate leaders of the world. Here are three things we need from you. Number one, which I just saw on a slide, which I would love to hear more about. It did say that we you're looking at providing stipends for teacher retention that wasn't actually spoken about, but we must provide stipends to our teachers. I know that there are constraints um because of the teacher contract and union. However, many teachers earn stipends throughout the district for a variety of reasons. Our teachers must hold an additional T-Soul certification and are expected to implement and adhere to a high demand for our dual language program. The second thing we need, we pay sometimes, I'm not sure all the time, uh for the T-Soul certification. And our teachers, while incredible, sometimes come to our school, obtain the certification, and then leave. And the last thing we need from the Board of Education and Dr. Astraea is we need to stop taking our dual language teachers out of Westrocks and Silvermine and putting them into the MLL classrooms. It is highly unfair to our specialized program. Oftentimes, our teachers are transferring to other schools within our district utilizing the T-Soul certification we have provided to make the same amount of money working in a much less rigorous program. And I don't blame them. Which brings me back to my first point. We need to provide incentive, a stipend perhaps, so that we can keep our teachers in our dual language program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sachne is next, and after her will be Karina Malik.
I am Sachne. Um I am a lifelong resident of Norwalk. I've gone to Kendall. I was a Kendall Cougar, a Angus Panther, and a McMahon Senator. So I and I love this town. I love the city. I like to reiterate what Ms. Sebastian said, um that I have two children. One was in Silvermine or is in Silvermine now in fourth grade. The other is in Westrock. And I love the schools. I love the program. I love the idea of the program that was presented to me six years ago, seven years ago, when I was looking at schools and they're like, oh, it's a magnet school. It's magnet status for Silvermine. And through the years, we've had so many um ups and downs with things, but the last two years have been crazy. We have a revolving door for teachers. I feel like they are, I did not know about the um the certification and then teachers possibly going on to other schools once they obtain it. But we have to do something to keep them, to keep the teachers happy, to keep the students happy. We are now in week three at Silvermine Four, and we had, we have now three teachers for the whole entire fourth grade. Our Spanish teacher is no longer with us. My child, my my Tegan, who is nine, is devastated that her teacher, she never had the same teachers to hug in the hall from the year before. And it's it's unfair to these kids what we've been presented with, that we are going to be able to give them these opportunities when they have no consistency, no continuity in their teaching leadership and who's guiding them in life. We are their parents, and we are here to guide them, but we also entrust that the education system is going to be their leaders during the day and their essential parents during the day in guiding them. You know, our at Silvermine, our mottos are respectful, responsible, and safe. And to give that motto to our children and to present it as real leaders would do, we have to show them that we respect their learning and their learning environment and provide the things that teachers need to feel comfortable in their environment, to feel safe, for them to feel respected. But it's it's full circle. It's not just something that we put on paper on a wall so that we can say we've done something. This is a program that means a lot to everybody, and I don't speak Spanish at home, but my children can understand.
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
And I think that that is something that speaks volumes for what my plan is for my kids, because I want them to have these opportunities in life down the road where they can go anywhere they want and be able to communicate with people, and they have more job opportunities. And that for me is what it was about for picking that school, and I would like to see it continue and survive and thrive as well as the teachers and everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
If we could um uh we, I see so hands raised uh on the Zoom platform, so if we can just take uh the first two uh two more uh from the Zoom platform before we go to uh those that are here.
This is Karina up next, and after her will be Nick Kanter.
So James, if you can uh before you go, if you can hold on one second, please. James, if you can let um
Miss Stoll, Becca Stoll. Becca Stoll.
Hello, my name is Becca Stoll. I live at twenty six Emerson Street in East Norwalk. Um I would specifically like to ask that those involved in budgeting take into account more funding for TMP and other transit-related opportunities. I've recently gotten involved in the Bike Walk Commission, and what we're noticing is that we have all of these great ideas and all these things we want to implement, be it the East Avenue Corridor Study, or Bike Share, or More Complete Streets, and the thing that is holding those ideas back is funding for TMP to hire more employees. We're hearing that from them directly. I would love for East Norwalk to become the kind of place that South Norwalk's becoming, where people feel comfortable walking and biking and taking the bus and can count on that as a way to safely get places, especially as we work towards building more workforce housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, go to the next one, James.
Mary Smith.
Hello, uh hi, my name is Mary Smith. I live at nine Hillwood Place. And I have a student in Westrocks Middle School in the Dual Language Program. I also have a fifth grader at the Silvermine Elementary Dual Language Program. I want to second what already some of my wonderful Silvermine parents and Westrocks parents have been saying, that we feel very much like the district loves to show us off. All of the wonderful things Silvermine is doing, we are plastered all over the place, but we're forgotten. We're back there. Our teachers are leaving us. We have now staffed administration in Stratford and Shelton. We're now going to Stamford. All these places, Reading, Weston now have hired our teachers right from underneath of us. We have trained them. We do this amazing program, but they leave. And let's be real, money talks. We need to give them stipends. We need to make sure our teachers feel supported from the district, not just from Board of Ed, but from the town. Our Board of Ed needs to make sure it has the funds to do what it needs to, because let's be real. Real estate prices and everything else is determined a lot of times by how good our schools are. People are going to move to where the schools are good. And Norwalk is starting to be that. Let's keep it that way. And then from a homeowner's perspective, for those taxes when it comes to my cars and my house, I'm tapped out. We need to find different routes, meaning probably some of these wonderful apartments that I'm looking at that keep getting built all over the city. How much are they being taxed? And what portion of that can go to our Board of Ed to make sure our town continues to be on the rise and not a downfall of its own devices? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karina Malik. I live on thirty Broad Street in Norwalk. And I'm also a Silvermine parent that would like to speak up while sorry, sitting close to our heart because I support everything the moms in front of me said. And I'm advocating for everything they said, but to add a little personal touch, let me tell you a story of my son. A fourth grader was very excited to enter fourth grade. There are four classrooms in a fourth grade, so you know, between his friends, they were very excited. Oh, which teacher am I going to get? Which teacher? Mia, us as moms also exchanging text messages. Oh, who's going to be our teacher? Who's going to be your teacher? We love them all. We want them all, but we're very excited. But we went in with three teachers and one TBA. About two days into the school year, we received communication from the school that the fourth grade classroom from three classrooms was reduced, from four classrooms, was reduced to three classrooms. So with that. So with that, okay, we managing, but the question started rising, how, you know, with fifty fifty bilingual program, when half a day is spent in Spanish, half of day is spent in English, how can be done with when two teachers are English speaker and one teacher is in the Spanish teacher? So we have two thirds to one thirds. We had, because as of last Friday, we lost our only Spanish teacher. And now we have, what, two thirds to zero thirds? Uh, my son faces every day with uncertainty, who will be in that third portion of the day now, who is his teacher will be? And I'm just very concerned for the future of the bilingual program. I love it. I have three children in all public schools. I have the youngest is in the kindergarten, very excited, coming and singing, you know, also also songs. I don't speak Spanish at home. We speak another language. So for us, it's a third language because we truly believe that languages are your superpowers, are something amazing that not only learns you to communicate, but also to think differently, understand others on a different level. And um, we would love to see the future of this program supported by
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
And the Board of Education and yes, so thank you for your time. And I'm sorry for my shaky voice, but again, it comes from the hearts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Nick Cantor, twenty-five Hawthorne Drive. Keep it short. Thank you for all the HVAC improvements as a parent of two in Wolf Pit. I'd love if you can extend that to Wolf Pit in the next school year, as well as if we can look at improving those streets to get up to Wolf Pit, the streets are the asphalt path and sort of, you know, you would want your kids sort of walking that way on their own. So if we can look at that, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Nick.
We'll take two. Tom Hope, we'll take two online, please.
Alyssa.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, thank you. Hi, my name is Alyssa in Progloo residing in the South Norwalk area. I am a parent of a three-year-old enrolled at the Norwalk Early Childhood Center. I know that it's been mentioned that special education program is running on a deficit, and it is an area you will be examining closer for the next fiscal school year. But misappropriating resources at the special education program is failing our most vulnerable student population. I just want to emphasize the need to better support our special education program, especially at N E C C. Currently, it seems N E C C lacks teachers, classrooms, and support staff necessary to meet the needs of the students in our community. Currently, there is one makeshift classroom set up in the gymnasium with one more possibly being added. Classroom sizes are enormous for the size of each classroom, with classrooms having up to eighteen to twenty students by the end of the year, many of which lack the chairs and carpet space needed to fit all students at one time. And while the educators are caring and passionate and loving teachers to our students, the lack of resources leaves them struggling to properly support their large plate caseloads. N E C C also lacks support staff. For example, there is currently one person available to help support students with A A C devices, which negates best practices recommended by professionals for full immersion of the device to help students properly use it as a tool for communication. Lastly, having a full day readiness program via lottery system fails our special needs students. Many students with special needs need a full day program to properly support their development and leaving it up to luck of pushing a button at a given time on a specific date is a huge disservice to our students, especially those with special needs who need to be in a special education classroom with a teacher that knows how to support their needs. Lastly, and with the number of things that's been brought up, this seems not as important, especially when we're talking about supporting our special needs students in the classroom. But I would love to see making sure that the playgrounds are up to date and renovated. For example, the younger grades playground at Kendall School for College Career and Readiness is falling apart. There is exposed metal. There is rusting. There is missing runs on the slide. It's just posing a major safety and health concern to me. Thank you so much for your time and for opening up this forum to the public. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next person.
Audrey Kozarin.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hi, I just want to thank you, Mr. Mayor and all my friends there. So thank you for holding this hybrid public hearing tonight. Um, I've been advocating for safe walking and biking and a top public transit system and traffic improvements since about twenty nineteen and have seen many, many good improvements and efforts. You know, it's really, we're working towards a quality of life here in Norwalk and in listening to the concerns of of parents and for their children in schools, certainly allowing kids to walk and bike safely to school uh, is better for our environment and for their health as well. Um, I hope that you'll consider allocating some operating funds that we need for more employees and staff at transportation, mobility, and parking. Jim Travers and Garrett Bolella and their team are amazing. I think there's only so much they can handle in terms of initiatives that are on tap and some of the ones desired. So I think that's a really important department to be supporting right now. Also, capital funding to study the creation possibly of some walking and biking trails that connect Norwalk with our neighboring cities. That would be so cool. Um, I've visited a number of times a wonderful city in Georgia, La Grange, Georgia, where they have a thirty-mile safe off-road bike walk trail that connects all the parts of their city. A real model, people come from all around the world to look at that, and I think we can do this. If we can also support capital and operating funds for the transit district that we have here. Mike Pat, Matt Pence and his team are also doing an amazing job for our public transit system. But you know, my husband and I live near the Kendall School. We would love to have a bus or shuttle to do our errands. Um, but there's sort of a lack of service in our area. And I feel bad for folks who have to rely on taking the bus and there's no shelters or sometimes no clear signage, proper crosswalks, people standing out there in the rain and the hot sun. You know, I think we could do better. Uh, if we, I think if we can make public transit more fun, more accessible, respectable, pleasant, accessible, better for the environment, I think that's a real key area. Um, and then last, to allocate some capital funding for the complete streets projects. You know, we've got a complete streets initiative about to happen on Wall Street. It's a brilliant model.
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
And it's a, it'll improve our quality of life. So many people have spoken from the heart about wanting a more peaceful city. And I join them and I just thank you for taking my comments tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Take two.
All right, next, next up is James Fails, and after that will be Megan Amato.
Hi, I'm Jamie Fails. I live at forty-eight Noah's Land Extension in Norwalk. Um, so I live in the community my whole life pretty much. I just want to iterate that the transit needs in the community are growing as the population is growing, as we're doing more development. I hope that it's transit oriented and that we're including uh, mode paths like walking and biking and just including even crosswalks. Uh, Gregory Boulevard between cemetery and down to the monument has only one crosswalk on that whole street. Um, we need to be considering uh, transit. We need to be considering uh, more bus stops, better bus stop facilities. Connecticut Avenue on front of the Stop and Shop regularly has lots of people standing in front of it by the bus stops. There's not enough seating in the area for for the groups that need it. It's a really important area because of all the grocery stores. We have yeah, so I really support all of that. Also, completing uh, pathways to get to other communities is is great. We've been using the North River Valley Trail. We pike through all the different segments in in Norwalk and up to Wilton. I hope that that continues and some of the other trails are are brought to fruition. We have also, we need to be mindful of uh, climate change and how it's going to, how it's affecting our communities. We have roads in the city that are flooding. We need to focus on that. Water Street regularly floods. This weekend, we had the boat show and the road down to the boat show was flooded. People had to be diverted over a a small pathway instead of the main road that was just rebuilt after standing. Finally, I'd like to, I I heard about tonight, the the HVAC pathway. I thought that is a great initiative and I really support that. I I work in the HVAC field. There's a commissioning engineer. And I can tell you that that industry is growing, especially as the natural gas pipeline hits capacity, we're going to need to start electrifying more. It's also going to help with climate needs. So let's just, I encourage our students to get into HVAC. It's great, great idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Megan coming up. After her will be Jess Hopkins. If we don't have anybody on Zoom.
Hi, I'm Megan Amato. I live at fifteen Melcoach Drive. I've, uh, my husband and I moved to Norwalk fourteen years ago, and we have two kids at Silvermine Dual Language Magnet School. I'm on the board of the P T A and my kids have just always loved the school and the program, their teachers that they've had, the experiences that they've had by being part of such a wonderful community. Um, we're always so proud to say that our kids go to a dual language school, that they're speaking two languages where my husband and I can't, we didn't have this type of opportunity when we were kids. It's not something available to most kids throughout the U S. Um, I have a lot of friends in neighboring towns and states. Um, they're jealous that such a program exists. So I think it really says a lot about the school. Um, yet this was really the first year for me that there were some bumps in the beginning of the school year. So my son started third grade without a permanent Spanish teacher. And although he loved the woman that's teaching him, she is temporary and cannot be a permanent teacher without the special certification. Um, and I was definitely devastated to learn that fourth grade's in even worse shape without two Spanish teachers. They only have two English teachers. So how are these kids getting this special dual language education without Spanish teachers? So what it really feels like is that Norwalk put together this great program and our neighboring towns are trying to replicate this. Um, and I think that says something about the great program that was put to put at Silvermine, that they're taking our teachers. And those schools are must have something to offer to them that is better than what we've been offering to them. So I echo a lot of what my fellow Silver Silvermine parents said before me. Our teachers work really hard. They educate our children and they do the extra work that is required in this specialized school. So we really need to do whatever we can to support them um, and provide them with stipends or whatever it is that can retain these teachers. We need this program to continue in Norwalk. I want to see it stay in the middle school. I would love to see it expand into the high school. And we really can't do this program in Norwalk without these quality teachers staying. So thank you for your time.
James, we'll go to two individuals online.
Christina Randall.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Awesome. Um, again, I just want to echo what a lot of people before me said. Thank you for having this hybrid mode. It means a lot of us who get out from work late do have an opportunity to be represented in this process. So thank you for that. I hope there are more of these going forward. Um, and also I could echo in what a few people before me were talking about. Uh, my priority here is transit. Um, as the daughter of aging parents who may not be able to get around uh, reliably with a car any longer and who use buses, uh, I would love to see more signage out on the streets, more bus stops, more bus shelters, and even, you know, something that could provide live updates about when a bus is going to be arriving at the stop, things of that nature, things that go into uh, you know, a more dignified walking experience, which means prioritizing pedestrians wherever we can. I've been seeing a lot of sidewalk bulb bouts, which I appreciate. I met some like-minded people when we did the the painting of this of North, North Main Street downtown. Some people representing T M P, the Transportation Mobility and Parking Authority. Um, also, some people representing the Bike Walk Commission. And they are doing some really great work, but the number one thing that all of these sorts of organizations need to really fulfill their mission is money. And here we are at a budget hearing, so I just want to put my hat in the ring for funding these sorts of programs. At that project, the North Main Street Painting Project, I learned a little bit about complete streets, and when I looked into the program on my own, I do really wholeheartedly believe that this is something that we should be pushing. Uh, I saw a few people speak who were speaking on behalf of the Dual Language Program at Silvermine Elementary School, which I'm a product of, which was a great program. So you know, definitely send some funding to them. But in that same regard, uh, you know, how that ties into transit is what, uh, what can we do to incentivize more families to send their kids to school on the bus? Because school car lines
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
all around the country and you know, it's affecting us as well are kind of obscene. There, you know, a large percentage of morning commutes, a large percentage of what contributes to morning traffic. And I think that, you know, walking on our city streets being as undignified as it is right now is a major hurdle to parents and families feeling safe and comfortable enough to send their kids to school, walking or biking um, or biking. Uh, so with that being said, I hope we can get some funding sent in in that direction and that we can bring these complete streets to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jess Hopkins is next, and after her will be Tanner Thompson, with who is the winner of the penmanship contest tonight.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Hopkins. I live at thirty-four Union Avenue. I am the proud parent of a third grader at Silvermine and also the current P T A co-president. Silvermine is such a wonderful school for this community. As we speak, as you speak tonight about children graduating out of the Norwalk school system and entering into the real world, this is a foundation that you provided them of being English and Spanish speakers, readers, readers and writers, beginning at kindergarten. We are educating the future bilingual leaders of the world and building the language bridges that have been backed by science to be incredibly beneficial at this young age. We need you to fight for that. My daughter currently has two substitutes teaching in her classroom. As wonderful as these two teachers are, this is a sad commonality at our school. We desperately need a solution to this all too common of an issue. We have obviously heard multiple times tonight, starting points to help our wonderful school. So I will not repeat them again, but I will share this quick story. The other day, my eight-year-old, who has grown up in a monolingual home, was attending and has attended Silvermine since kindergarten, was playing at the Allison Wyatt Playground. A little girl wanted to play with my daughter and her, sorry. Her brother came to translate and ask if she could play with her. Immediately, my daughter switched into Spanish part of her brain and took off with the little girl playing. This is an absolute gift that we as a community cannot lose. Our school is in grave danger of ending that legacy if we do not receive your help with the deterioration that is occurring to our beautiful swamps. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanner Thompson is next, and then the last name on the list is Jack Myers. After that.
Good evening, esteemed assembled leaders.
Good evening, esteemed assembled leaders of the community. I'm Tanner Thompson. I live at sixteen Hillside Place, number K five in Norwalk. I am a member of the Bike Walk Commission and served for three years as the Chair of the Bike Walk Commission. I want to echo all the sentiments about transportation. Of course, I'm here about transportation. But I want to spend most of the time talking about why. I don't often get the chance to address leaders of the school district. And as a often somebody who I feel like is really in touch with my, my inner child, you, you may have seen me show up to these hearings before in, in shorts and a t-shirt and sandals. And I ride my bike everywhere. I think in part of that is because I had a very positive experience as a child getting around in the town where I grew up in suburban Indianapolis. There was a trail that connected the entire town. That was an old railroad right of way. And from a very early age, from the age of seven or eight, my parents were comfortable letting me get around, go to school, visit friends, visit family, even go to the grocery store on my bicycle because the city had invested into high-quality paths like this trail, but also around the city, there were trails that were fit for a kid as young as I was at the time to ride around. And that really, I think, when I, when I think back, I wasn't thinking about it at the time, obviously I was a kid. But I think that's where my, my drive to, to see more of that built in the place where I live comes from. I've cited this, this statistic before. In the sixties, in nineteen sixty-nine specifically, according to the data that I got this from, forty-two percent of children in the United States walked or the bike to school. That number in twenty seventeen, according to the National Household Travel Survey, was ten percent. It went, we went from forty-two percent to ten percent of kids riding their bike and walking to school. And as somebody else mentioned, that has led in part, among other things, to obscenely long drop-off lines, but it's also led to what I think is a diminishing of the independence the kids have, not only to get to school, but also to get to other places. I grew up pretty privileged in that I was able to build that independence from a young age, walking and biking around. So when I ask for things like more funding for employees at TMP, which I saw firsthand as like the biggest bottleneck to progress on walking and biking in Norwalk, that's where I'm coming from. I want to see our kids and our, all of our, all of us former kids be able to get around in ways that build independence, in ways that are sustainable
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
for our community, is sustainable for our planet. I worry that the kids that we have in school, I obviously want them to get an amazing education. I want them to learn multiple languages so that they can have those intercultural experiences. But I also want them to have a planet and a built environment that they can look forward to growing up in. So instead of having all of this anxiety around what is our planet going to look like when I'm an adult? Is it even going to be worth living in? Because that anxiety is real and it's shared among my generation and people younger
Three minutes.
So that's where I'm coming from. Please fund TMP and the other things that people are asking for. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
James, let's go online. Take two online, please.
Angela.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening. My name is Angela Hidaldo. I live at one fifty-eight Perry Avenue. First of all, I really appreciate you offering this hybrid open forum. I have a third grader, a third grader at Silvermine who hasn't had a Spanish teacher since the beginning of this school year. So we at Silvermine are in dire need of retaining and attracting dual language teachers. To second what other parents have said, we absolutely need stipends for our teachers. Silvermine not only has a demanding dual program, it also requires additional certification. So we would really like our teachers to get a stipend for completing that additional certification. Also, if our school pays for TSO certification, we, teachers must be required to stay for a certain number of years at our, at our school. And lastly, the district needs to fill our dual language classrooms, not only with the appropriate number of teachers, but also with the necessary number of students. I believe that Silvermine still has capacity for one hundred more students. So before filling other dual language programs at our schools, if we could please have that priority. That's all for, that, that is it for now. And thank you so much for listening. Have a good evening.
Xena King.
Hi, everyone. My name is Xena King and I live at seven Nursery Court. I have two children in Norwalk. Both of them are at Silvermine's dual language program. I wanted to start by just sharing two anecdotes of why this program is so important. We have an two neighbor, we have a neighbor couple. The husband runs a thriving business here in Norwalk and his wife speaks Spanish. I go to her, I visit her, we're able to make signs and smile and hug, but my children show up. They are in full conversation mode. The connection they have is something I can't duplicate because I can't speak that language. Another anecdote is we were traveling earlier this year in a friend speaking country and it took my daughters only a few hours to realize that by using their Spanish, they could actually communicate to people in a whole other language. The amount of confidence and the comfort that we saw with them, again, it is really a factor of being in this environment at Silvermine. When I think of Silvermine, I just think back to when my husband and I moved to Norwalk. We specifically wanted to attend Silvermine. We're, we're former Norwalk individuals who moved across the country and the world. But we wanted to attend Silvermine because this is a once in a lifetime chance to give your children this opportunity. It opens up a whole new world to them. I think Norwalk in many ways continues to be at the forefront of education and Silvermine and our program is one of those sort of beacons of creativity. We created a program, it's dual language. It's now one of the things that is duplicated across the Fairfield County, towns where they used to look down at us. They're literally trying to steal our model and steal our teachers at the same time. I think we can do better. I think as we look at budgets, we can think creatively, not only, hey, we've created this wonderful opportunity, this wonderful school, but how can we leverage our bu- budget in a creative way to ensure that it thrives? I think some of the things that come to mind to me is, first of all, is even in Norwalk, we're now duplicating Silvermine's model at other schools. Why do we need to do that? We have an elementary school where we still have capacity to fill those classrooms with students who want the type of program we have. Why should we create new programs in other schools and cannibalize teachers and instructors that could be at Silvermine? Why are they going to those other schools? That's literally to me, it seems like it's a waste of resources when we already have
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
Can we send students instead of creating other programs? Can we send them to Silvermine? In addition, I think, can we talk to the union? Can we work creatively around contracts? Can we work with individuals who we support when they're getting their certificates? Can we get them to stay in Norwalk? Can we change a language in contracts? What can we do? Can we look creatively around that? In addition, I think there's, there's a whole lot
Three minutes.
out of time, but I'd like to say thank you and just really please think creatively to leverage Silvermine to be the beacon that it is for Norwalk.
Thank you.
James, the second other person online.
Jay Satcher.
Hello, I'm Jay Satcher, one eighty-six Silvermine Avenue. I just want to add my voice to the chorus of Silvermine parents. I have two, we have two children at Silvermine, a first grader and a third grader. I think the brain drain of teachers that's happening in Norwalk is going to be a black mark on Norwalk. As the years trickle down, this is the sort of thing that, especially in a state like Connecticut, education really matters and we need to invest to keep these teachers here, to give them the stipends they need. The administration right now is working so hard tirelessly to fix the problem, but they need support from higher up. That's all I really have to say, but I just want to thank everyone for the time.
Thank you.
We'll take
Oh yeah, next up is Jack Myers and then Liz Liederman.
Hello there, my name is Jack Myers. You're all for holding this hearing. I live at three Union Park. Almost like exactly a week ago, I was almost struck by a car. And I think a major factor in that is that our roads are designed to throw cars through and there's very little protection for pedestrians and bike riders. And I think we need to fund the initiative that we already have going for complete streets to improve our roads and to factor in all the ways that people get around. And in order to do that, TMP desperately needs more employees. They, they need more money staff, the department and to execute on plans they have. I'd also like to encourage in the budget, more room for projects surrounding biking, bike trails, parks, to bring a little bit of that green space that Norwalk lacks back in. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Liz Liederman.
Hi there, I'm Liz Liederman. I'm at seventy-three East Grox Road. I am an avid cyclist. I also rode my bike to school or walked to school every day as a kid and right now, it, it frightens me to walk by the schools or cycle to the schools that a lot of our kids are going to. I'm much more likely to be found in track jams behind both strapping their children off. I, I was hit by a car in Norwalk in twenty twenty-three. I was very lucky, which seems like an odd thing to have to say when you've been hit by a car. Both I and my bicycle, for the most part, survived the experience. It was a neighborhood road, low speed, broad daylight, had the right of way. Every time I get on my bicycle and I ride a lot, I think about the moment of impact. Every time, thousands of miles that I put in all over town. And it's the thing that I love to do, but it's, it's a thing that is not available and I actually worry that it's not available to kids because our streets frankly just aren't safe enough for them to be able to go from point A to point B. And so I'd like to ask for more funding and more attention for complete streets, right? And really for safe streets, for pedestrians, for people that are bicycle commuting to work or recreationally, for kids on bikes and for people that want to walk around, that need to walk around to take care of their errands. We have a safety issue. When I'm driving and I see people walking, I am concerned for them. I'm on Route seven every day. But even in downtown and areas that we think of as being more pedestrian friendly, still pretty scary to be there on foot with cars within the bar. If we make the investments in complete streets, we can change the perception and change the car culture so that people take precedence. So I hope that you'll fund projects that help move the needle and get us to the tipping point so that drivers are more observant of people and our community is more desirable for people to live in.
Thank you.
James, let's take the next three residents online, please.
Paul Fox.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Paul Fox. I live at twenty-six Beldon Avenue. And I would like to echo what several people have said before about the importance of improving the safety of our streets. There's been a significant uptick in pedestrian fatalities in the last few years, which has been very concerning and I think it's a trend that we need to take seriously and address. And what, definitely one of the ways we can address that is by giving TMP the staff that they need to execute more projects and to stand top of writing grants and getting more money from the federal government and the state to fund, fund these things as well. I'd also like to echo what previous, what folks have previously said about the importance of our bus infrastructure. A lot of it is old or non-existent. Fully half of the bus stops in Norwalk have no sign and only one in six bus stops have a shelter, which is not, doesn't look very good as far as for people who are, you know, looking to ride the bus. So I think that's something we need to do something about. One thing that I would particularly like to call out as well is that the Bike Walk Commission has been looking to get a grant for to plan a, a trail from Norwalk between Norwalk and Darien that will become part of the East Coast Greenway. But it needs matching money from the city. So I hope that the county council will also consider including that matching funding in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Pavia.
Hi, my name is Jack Pavia. I'm at thirty-two Vanderbilt Avenue. I want to first express my appreciation for your holding this meeting and hearing from constituents regarding issues that matter to them. Though I wish I could see more of my fellow Gen Z'ers at this meeting tonight. At the age of twenty, I'll probably be the youngest to testify. I want to talk about the issue of transportation options and what the council can do to work on the issue. As I'm sure you know, the Norwalk Transit District is working towards a major change to its route network called NTD Ahead, bringing us a more comprehensive and consistent bus network. However, funding has been an issue, though Norwalk has been able to plug budget shortfalls. Put simply, I'm advocating for a budget that would expand our public transportation system. We need bus lanes to ensure trips are completed in a timely manner, surrounding pedestrian infrastructure that allows a safe walk to the bus stop like bus bulbs and sidewalks, signs to mark those bus stops as previously mentioned, and shelters to protect riders, of which there are four thousand two hundred daily from the elements. As rises in Norwalk, the cost of travel increasingly important. Owning multiple cars is a financial strain on families in Norwalk. Additionally, as the system expands and it becomes a viable option for Norwalk residents of all economic backgrounds, ridership will grow. In a growing Norwalk, looking for young professionals to find a home here, I can tell you firsthand that a solid public transportation system matters when choosing a place to live. I also want to advocate for greater collaboration between Norwalk and our state delegation as well. Though I'm aware that municipalities are often tasked to deal with issues they don't have the capacity to handle, with greater state level funding, I believe these goals can be accomplished, leading to less congestion on our roads and a greater affordability in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's take another one online.
Diane LaRocella.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members that are on the, on the committees and the boards. For the record, my name is Diane LaRocella. I live at twenty-one Little Fox Lane in West Norwalk. I first wanted to thank all participating, including the residents, that, that this is a hybrid meeting and I am really thrilled and want to applaud the efforts to, first of all, go over a new charter. Took a lot of time, still in progress, work in progress. But this particular mandate of having this in advance is terrific. I wish we had more than three minutes because it is a large budget. But anyway, I will begin and hopefully get through what I can. A lot of people spoke tonight. I wanted to lift up what the Silvermine families have said. I have spoken to some of them and I am quite alarmed that this seems to have fallen by the wayside. I also believe in complete streets and have said so publicly. But we have to look and see how we fund a lot of these good ideas and the current budgets, if not future budgets. The thing is, we have to look at truly needs over wants. I have seen where in the capital funding, even that the Board of Estimate took a look at, that a lot of wants were included, including what we saw in the mural project where, and I've made my thoughts about that known, but I do think that that should be taken off the, that there should be more guardrails and they should be following what the purchasing department makes all the other departments do. For some reason, they were exempt. I think we have to look at more revenue, of course, that is not on the backs of the taxpayers and that includes a full-time grant department. This has been bandied about and I believe, Mr. Mayor, the policy of having senior staff in each of the departments handle most of the grants where we have hired them Handle most of the grants where we have hired them to actually do engineering or other things is. Something you need to change, while we do need their expertise in some of the wordsmithing. We need a full-time experienced grant department for a city of the size. Because we leave a lot of money on the table that can go into the Board of Ed as well as the rest of our departments. And I have proof of it that I will submit to Mr. Ellis and Mr. Schmidt and yourself shortly. Um, we also need to update our enforcement at every level, every department, firm but fair. We need to reinstate the facilities construction committee. Which was taken away and reduced the input from the public that is knowledgeable about energy policy and construction policy. Our energy management, both in the Board of Ed and the city, has lost the citizens and taxpayers. Millions of dollars a year because we have an ancient policy of not placing solar on any place but a new. Lastly, I just wanted to state that we also need to look at a stormwater authority and put money in investment. Investment in a truly good website, which has been talked about. And we need to reform how we handle our open space monies, because money has been wasted in the way it has happened. If you just look at how and what we've spent money on there. I ask, uh, thank you very much for having this, but I do ask that you reform some of the policies.
Three minutes, thirty seconds.
Not to have enough money to fund quality of life, energy management. And lastly, waste management, please ask across the board. A twenty percent reduction in waste management in every department, let the department staff. Including the Board of Ed, give you information how to reduce the expensive trash hauling, including.
Four minutes.
Thank you, uh, the Board of Ed should be combined with D P W, that would save them quite a bit of money. Because we have some professionals in that department, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take those that are in house.
Uh, next up is Jayden Whitmore, and after that will be Jeremy Leong.
Uh, hi, my name is Jayden Whitmore, uh, thank you for having me. Um, I don't really have too much to say except on my experiences, um, I'm an avid biker and um I've worked alongside a bike walk commission. Um, and I bike frequently up to um. I bike frequently up to N C C. And plenty of times I'll have experiences with drivers where um some of them will be close to almost like. Um, clipping me a couple of times, um, just very selfish, very um. Uh, just experiences, because I'm mostly because I'm driving on the streets. Um, and the bike lanes are usually way too thin to be able to. Actually, um, to be able to drive comfortably, so even when I'm driving in the bike lanes. Um, cars will still be riding close to me and uh close to to clipping me, so. Um, I I asked a T M P to uh they could expand the uh bike lanes. Uh, they said they do so in the summer, um, that wasn't until September that they uh got to actually um. Actually getting to that project, but I'm happy they're finally uh getting to it, um, so I guess. I really ask that um there's more funding and um complete streets and T M P as well, so. Maybe there's um. I I guess there's so, they're on uh programs on these uh projects. Um, on the the time that they say they are. Um, I also ask that there's more um. I ask that, that's why there's funding into the bus networks as well, um, not not just for um. At the mostly for the students, um, I think, because the students, there are a lot of students in um high schools and colleges that get around, they own their cars. Um, and a lot of them also don't have a lot of money. Um, and also the buses only take, um, they'll take them to like. Uh, specific spots like say Stop and Shop, ShopRiders, specific uh those those specific supermarkets. Um, they won't take them to the um, say, places that are close to their homes or.
Just thirty seconds.
I, so I guess um I'm asking that maybe there's um. More funding into maybe more stops, more bus stops for students, um, for high school and college students. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hi, my name is Jeremy Leong, I live at thirty-five Gray Hall Road. Uh, I've lived in Norwalk my entire life and uh over the course of the those years, I've. Uh, watched traffic go from not much at all to practically gridlocked uh for many hours of the day, I'm sure you've seen it. On the I ninety-five and the Merritt and the Route seven, the lines get longer and longer, especially as people come home from work. Uh, where I live, I'm between the Miller Driscoll School and the Silvermine School. And uh during uh pickup hours from like two to four thirty, uh, the lines are, the lines are long and they don't go anywhere and. Um, I I I go past and I see just single, single parents sitting in there, sitting in their oversized cars, just blocking all this traffic. Um, I'm, I may be less than a mile away from two grocery stores and the newly renovated uh train station and I can't reach. I can't go to any of these places without a car, even though I'm within walking distance because there are no sidewalks. Uh, from my house, I can see South Norwalk, it's maybe, maybe two miles or two and a half, it's not, it's not a far distance and I can't reach it. Because the only way to get there is by a car, I can't reach any bus stop because if I, the closest bus stop to me. I'd have to go across the Route seven, that's maybe six lanes of traffic, and I do see people go down that. That that bridge by the Route seven just to get to that, that one bus stop. And I I like to go for walks around my neighborhood and I can't, I always in the back of my mind, I think. It would only take one driver going a little too fast or just not paying enough attention. And they would hit me, there's not a lot of, there's nowhere else to go except maybe the narrow space on somebody's lawn. And uh the road. And I see people walking around all the time and I know that people want to be outside and I know that they face the same danger as I do. Because they walk around with their spouses and their kids and their dogs. And the only places that they can go are the few remaining side streets where there's very little traffic. There used to be more and now they've been overtaken by cars. Um, and so what I'm asking you is to please, please look for ways to allow pedestrians to go even a moderate. Distance to reach these public facilities like train stations and grocery stores, because otherwise I have to. I have to add my car to that traffic and it only makes the problem worse.
Two minutes, thirty seconds.
That's, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's take the online residents, please.
Alyssa Petit.
Oops, sorry, hi everybody, this is Alyssa Petit. I am a Norwalk resident and uh live at Sixth Geneva Road. I am a mom of a sixth grader who is at Rotten Middle School. And so um appreciate the forum, just wanted to mention two things uh that are on the top of my priority list for as a mom. And a local community member and um kind of echoing the voices of a lot of moms in my community as well. Number one, um, as more and more kids in our schools and going down lower and lower. Um, have access to communication devices, whether cell phones, watches that have communication on that. I think it's a priority to that we keep supporting student uh teachers. In keeping these devices out of the classroom daily, so that we can keep our kids focused on learning. Um, couple different er districts in the area have gone to different plans for that and um. I think that's worth looking at on a district-wide level uh with our kids. Number two, keeping our kids safe in schools. Um, you know, keeping guns and weapons out of the classrooms and our schools, this is. On my heart and mind every day when I send my kid to school, I want her to come home. Um. And other, other families aren't that lucky to have their kids come home, so I know we've worked a lot on this, I know we continue to. And I just want to extend my voice that. This is where, this is place where I want my, my tax dollars and my funds spent. Um, I don't want teachers to have to regulate this, I want it fixed at this, the district level and the school level. And um helping keep our kids safe, thanks for letting me share, and I pass.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Tabashnik.
Hello? Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Okay, great, I'm getting the pop-up like three different times. Hello, my name is Anna Tabashnik, I live at Ford Gilbert Street in Norwalk. Um, I'm also an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission and I'm speaking today. Um, not in that role representing myself, um, and I don't have anything written down, so apologies. It's a little scattered, um, I just want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to share our. Priorities for the budget prior to the departments putting together their budget requests, I hope this year. To see three things um in the budget prioritization, I'd like to see. The schools fully funded, a commitment to find a way to fund them through a combination of the operating budget. And other um magic ways you guys have of doing it, I understand the desire not to raise the operating budget. We're gonna have to stay that way for the following year, um, but sort of an understanding and a trust that the Board of Ed. Um, that we have a Board of Ed, that the schools have a CFO and that they go through a process to really outline their needs. Um, and to trust that and to fully fund our schools. Um, my second priority would be funding for enforcement in Norwalk. Um, the P M Z Commission doesn't have a formal rollover enforcement, but when people see that I'm on P M Z, I've gotten a lot of requests. Uh, for help, understanding how the system works and moving things forward. And through that, I've been able to have um a partial inside view to the vast amount of work. Uh, that our enforcement staff have in front of them and need to do. And the need to prioritize technology to manage their workload and to get more transparency to the public. Um, I'd also like to see fees and fines fairly and transparently enforced, which I think will also help our revenue. And my third priority as a pickleball enthusiast. Um, is to ask you guys to fully fund whatever Parks and Rec wants for pickleball. Um, tonight, the uh, tonight's sunset was at about six forty-five and I worked really, really hard to get somebody to watch my children. Um, he's called my husband, and by the time he got home and I got to the court, I wouldn't have been able to play. Because it would have already been dark, even though the senior center is a great place to have lights, it is um. Not in the residential neighborhood. We asked um Parks and Rec for lights and they said that they couldn't afford it, so. Please, lights, porta-johns, whatever fun pickleball stuff you can throw in there, I think it's great for the community, thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Let's take another person online and then we'll take the the person in house and then we'll finish up, it looks like, then how two more um residents online. So one more.
Andrew Sinclair.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
You can.
Awesome, uh, my name is Andrew Sinclair, been the president of the Brookside neighborhood of Norwalk for the last decade or so. I appreciate the opportunity to speak directly in a budget prioritization meeting, so I'll I'll be quick. Um, I wanted to join the chorus for providing funding for T M P. The Complete Streets Initiative in the Norwalk Transit District. Um, I regularly see kids walking home from school, dodging through traffic in front of my house, as well as. Adults going to work and running errands on major roads like Connecticut Ave and and Route seven. Uh, having to make their own bus stops and street crossings, um. Improving walking and biking infrastructure uh has been shown to improve traffic safety for everyone, from drivers to the kids going to and from uh home and school. Uh, it's a valuable long-term investment that increases uh local small business revenues. It also improves the lived environment by reducing noise and air pollution, which, you know, helps the kids once they've gotten to school. Uh, it's also good for the city in the short term and the long term, uh, so please keep it under consideration as you're finishing the budget this year, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Sydney Thompson.
Good evening, uh, I also as one of the other voice um echoing the desire for additional funding for T M P and complete streets. Um, I commute out of Norwalk um for my job, I'm a PhD student at Yale. Um, I spend a lot of time um in transit and um I really appreciate the infrastructure that is uh between my home in. Uh, South Norwalk, um, on Hillside Place and the South Norwalk Train Station, um. And uh, I would love to see additional bike infrastructure there, especially on M L K. Um, I know, uh, I've heard that you're big fine that uh the city has recently gotten a grant. Um, to help improve M L K, um, and I know that one of the bottlenecks is the number of employees at T M P, just man-hours to be able to. Um, to put some really good ideas um created by really smart people into practice. Um, so uh again, would love to see more funding allocated for T M P um in next year's budget. Um, likewise, uh, ideologically, I would love to spend more time riding the bus and um as someone who doesn't ride it very often. The the barrier to entry I find very difficult. And so again, uh, I think that if T M P was able to have more uh. Funding, more employees, uh, that they could spend some of that time uh reducing the the overhead to start riding the bus, creating. Um, maps that are easier to read, um, I know that there's, there's some uh. Route redesign happening right now for the bus, um, but having bears that uh you can pay on your phone, having an app that can track us in real time, things like that. You would make it significantly easier for people who know, don't just live in carless, but also um. Ideologically want to spend less time in their car or people who care about creating sustainable future for our planet. Um, people who want to see less traffic on the road, right? So, to conclude, uh, once more, I just want to, as I said, be another voice echoing the desire for additional funding for complete streets for T M P. Um, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
See, this is. Just. Iliana Zuniga.
Hello and good evening, my name is Iliana Suniga, I live at Running Brook Lane, I've been a resident here in Silvermine over fifteen years. And tonight I want to highlight three key areas that are, that need urgent attention in our community. First and foremost, education, every year I come to this budget meetings to ask that we stop cutting school funding. Our teachers need ongoing training to stay effective, our students need proper resources to thrive. And our school administrators need the tools to run our schools as they should. We should not rely on the incredible ability of Dr. Estrella and her staff to get uh federal grants or other grants. These cuts hurt our entire community and it's time to make education a top priority in our budget. Please do not stop, but please do not stop shortchanging against us this year, it's the strong schools lead. To a strong community and we cannot afford to keep up taking resources away from them. Second, the issue of sidewalks in Silvermine, where I am a resident, but also other areas of the city. As a runner who's been navigating these streets for fifteen years, I know firsthand how dangerous it can be without sidewalks. Our kids deserve a safe path to walk to school and families should feel comfortable walking around the neighborhood. My children now old enough to drive missed out on this and I don't want the next generation to face the same risk. I urge you to approve the budget to finish our streets and install sidewalks in Silvermine, this is a critical. This is a critical investment in the safety and well-being of our community. And lastly, consider sustainable solutions like solar panels across the city. By installing solar panels on public buildings and parking lots, we can significantly reduce utility costs and rein, reinvest those savings in other critical projects like schools and infrastructure. This long-term investment would not only save money, but also move us toward a more sustainable and energy-efficient future. To sum it up, I'm asking for three things. Prioritize school funding, no more cuts. Invest in safe sidewalks in Silvermine and the rest of the city as needed. And explore sustainable cost-saving measurements like sonar panels on public buildings and parking lots to support future infrastructure projects. Thank you so much for your time and I appreciate your consideration on this important matters.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in the audience in the council chambers as versus to speak? Helen, we're here. Yeah. Okay, if you can sign, while he's signing in, we'll stay online. We have one hand that was just raised and um, we'll ha, it looks like we'll have one more person online and then one person in the room and then we'll uh, move to close the public hearing.
James, do you want to get Richard Bonifant?
Rich Bonifant?
Yeah. Okay, um, Rich Bonifant, Park Hill Avenue. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I feel a little lonesome tonight. I'm going to speak on behalf as a taxpayer tonight and uh, I'm just asking that you figure out ways to keep our taxes down. My personal suggestion would be to start phasing out the enterprise zone. Um, that, that covers a, a great swath of uh, downtown Norwalk and, and other areas of town. We need to get the developers to pay their fair share instead of making the residents pay their own taxes and other people's too, right? These enterprise and opportunity zones, all they do is encourage, encourage developers to smash down what we have here in Norwalk and build something bigger. Otherwise, they don't get the tax break. If, if, if somebody has their building and they leave it alone, then they pay their regular taxes, but you get a break for smashing something down and building something bigger. So anyway, all I'm saying is please look out for the people that are paying the bills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is John Levin. I live at two forty-nine Chestnut Hill Road in Norwalk, of course. Uh, Richard, I thought I was going to be the only one to speak on behalf of the taxpayers and the homeowners. Um, I am a homeowner, uh, so that means I get to pay taxes in Norwalk. And uh, who really enjoys paying their taxes? Probably no one. Um, but I will say um, that attending this meeting tonight um, has taught me that um, uh, my tax dollars are being used for some really, really good projects and I will feel better when I mail my check in uh, every six months to pay my tax bill to Norwalk. And um, I am actually elated uh, to uh, learn about the dual language program at Silvermine School. Um, and I'm so glad that that's where money is going. And um, you know, I would just say, do whatever you can to make sure it doesn't uh, get mucked up in any way and keep it going as best you can. Um, I'm thrilled to um, help pay for a more sustainable city with, you know, sidewalks and uh, walkable streets and bikeable streets um, and a safe place for pedestrians and bicyclists and um, also that uh, for people that uh, ride the bus because they want to or because they have to. So anyway, I'm a taxpayer. Um, I'm happy to do my part. Uh, no one enjoys paying their taxes, uh, but uh, it seems like there's some really, really good things going on in the city that the taxpayers can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have one person online. James?
Sally Martinez.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I am, my name is Sally Martinez. I live on fifty-five Plattsville Avenue and as a mother of a fourth grader in Silvermine, I'm sure you guys will, you know, it's repeating the same issue again. Um, my son just lost his Spanish teacher and the dual program is such an enviable program that it is now being copied by other cities. I would love to see our school be funded the right amount to keep our programs, to keep our teachers happy. They are such an amazing, amazing community. I am so happy to have moved to Norwalk, coming from Westchester, growing up in Westchester, New York and not having an opportunity to be in a, you know, to even have a dual program. It still doesn't. It's amazing to see it here. Um, so I have another, another two kids that I would love to be a part of Silvermine again and to continue with these dual programs. So I would be happy to see that our, you know, taxpaying money is going to the right places along with sidewalks. It, it is, as, as everybody else has said, it's hard to take a walk out here in the streets because it is so dangerous to walk around with either half a sidewalk or no sidewalks. So, thank you for having the forum open for us, parents and for us, the community in Norwalk and I hope to see the resources go into the right places.
Thank you.
Okay, um, it looks like we addressed all those that wish to speak that have been in the uh, in the council chambers as well as online. Um, before we close, uh, members of the panel, if uh, you have any comments that you'd like to make, uh, starting with Planning and Zoning Commission, any things?
No, uh, no. This is a new process for us this year because of the charter change. Uh, our role in the past has simply been to determine whether uh, budget items uh, uh, fell within uh, requirements of uh, uh, the plan of development and conservation. Uh, so I'm, I'm looking forward to this new process and I will bring this information back uh, to the other members of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Council President, Darlene Yu.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Um, one of the things that I really want to say is that I am excited that we've got this part of the budget process um, in our charter. I think this is something that the council uh, members have been talking about for a while and we're glad to see that this process has now been put into place. Um, we're sure we're going to have some tweaks to it, but the, the, the goal was and is to have this sort of thing where people feel comfortable coming out the onset of the budget to be able to give input. And I think this is tru, true transparency and I'd like to see us, we will continue this process even more. But I think this was a great start and I'm just happy that uh, the, the Charter Revision Commission saw that this was something that needed to be done and implemented it and I'm glad that we're here this evening, following through with that order. And as you can see in the information that was presented, there is a real calendar of, of, of meetings that will continue to allow residents to be engaged in this process moving forward. And so I just thank everyone for making this happen, who was on that commission, who put that in for all the folks who voted, all the residents who voted for this. And so it is our command and charge to make sure that, that we um, go through with this charge the way that we are. So I just thank everybody here um, who came out tonight too, because if you look, we had close to a hundred people, which I think is a really good start and we should have a hundred more the next time. We don't want to be here for two hours, but we'd like to have a hundred more. Um, so thank you very much.
Or Education Chairperson, Kyle McCall.
I too am um, thankful for the charter revisions. Um, more importantly, because we get to have these conversations earlier and together as joint group. Um, we have to remember the importance of education in any conversations that we have. And I want to thank um, the public that spoke up tonight. Um, we are listening. We are paying attention. And um, like Ms. Young said, I hope that more um, public members come up and speak up and, you know, let us know what's important to them. Because we as the board and also the city, we need to hear what is important to families and for the children.
Thank you.
I've just been told that um, on a night where we're here for two hours listening to the public, which is really great, it's also Greg Burnett's birthday. And I'm sure you spent it just like you would like to.
Couldn't have planned it any better.
And that was Dr. Astraea told me that it was your birthday.
Well, thank you everyone for attending and participating. We truly appreciate your input and um, um, this is the beginning of the process. Um, so we, we, and I'm sure there'll be additional input on additional topics that will come our way and um, as stated, you know, we will take that into account as we begin to craft the budget for the uh, the twenty-five uh, fiscal year. And uh, we look forward to uh, the creation of one Norwalk budget to continue to move the city forward. So with that, uh, motion to adjourn. Thank you, Council President Darlene Yu. We, we say adjourn. Thank you.